Lawrence.
Right.
Navager.
Here.
Grace.
Here.
Ireland.
Here.
Jack.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Seth.
Here.
Outwater.
Here.
Knorr.
Here.
Star.
Here.
Lancer.
Here.
Law.
Here.
McNeil.
He's here.
Jeffrey.
Present.
Williams.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Blanchard.
Here.
Michelle Paltter.
Here.
Flannigan.
Here.
Mastrom.
Here.
Heisler.
Here.
Corey.
Here.
Notice is hereby given that Shenango County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing July 11, 2016, 11:00 a.m., Shenango County Office Building, Board of Supervisors, Chambers, 5 Court Street, Norwich, New York. This public hearing is for the adoption of guiding Shenango a county comprehensive plan. This plan in conjunction with existing county plans will serve as a blueprint and provide guidance for future municipal planning and development action. It is anticipated by this plan will be reviewed by the County Planning and Development Board on a yearly basis. A copy of the plan may be reviewed at dated June 30, 2016. Donna M. Jones, Director of Planning, Shenango County Department of Planning.
We'll now declare a public hearing on the comprehensive plan open. And once again, if you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name for the record, and please keep your comments to five minutes each. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Keneese, also known as Geraldine Palliata, from South Oxford, Route 12. The land that I own, take care of, to the south on Route 12, the flooding went over Route 12 a few years ago. And then to the north of the property, $2.5 million was invested in the waterfall that needed to be put in. So I come with a background of what environment, what the climate, and what humanity is doing to the land. I came up here in 1946 on the train, and we worked the land, we had cows, we had chickens, et cetera. And as a kid, my playground was up on the hill. We didn't have a car, and I played and loved that land. I love this land. It is part of my psyche. And I come here today knowing what has happened in the news in the last week, and I cry listening to it because we're all affected with what goes on all over our planet. And any of us could be on the local news tomorrow because of the mass media that we have. And you hold an office that's very important in the county, and I ask that you look at these guidelines with a moral imagination, an ethics that goes beyond corporate gain and personal gain. We need to... Science has told us that our heart has a brain also. It's not just our intellect, it's our heart too. And our heart and our intellect has to come together to speak for our land. It used to be slaves were property, women were property, and now we look at our property as property. But we don't own it, really. It's our sustenance. We lose our water, we lose our land, in upper New York State, we lose everything. I have a spring that feeds my drinking water, all the water. You know, I'm at the whatever of the people, you know, upgrade of my home. You know, so what we learn, what we do affects everyone. We're a little tiny county, but that doesn't mean that we don't have to have a big vision and that we can't act from outside the box. And that's what, looking at these guidelines, revisiting them, looking at, you know, solar and, you know, we've seen in the past that oil and gas, yes, they have given us the steps to have more and more and more, but is more and more necessary all the time? And also, is it good? Is it good for what is under our one feet? So I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the time that you put in. And a lot of this time, people don't know how much time you put into your offices and the fires that you have to, you know, take out and everything. And I'm not in your place either, but I'm asking you to have vision, a moral, ethical vision beyond maybe what is our, you know, what our mindset is right now. So thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service.
My name's Steve Ellsworth. I'm from McDonald. I've compared this comprehensive plan up to about, from the 2012 plan up to page 111, where they start with services. I don't think I need to compare that. There's a lot of sections that are the same, but there's some that can't be changed or only reworded because of historic events or geological data. On page eight, the purpose of the Shenango County Comprehensive Plan, the last bullet states to stimulate public interest, participation, and responsibility in municipal affairs. You've stimulated public interest, and some would like to take some responsibility in the public affairs, but the opportunity for participation is lacking. Can we hold a final draft of this comprehensive plan for a year to allow for community work jobs? Both the 2012 and 2016 plans state the same on page nine. The public participation process used was carried out through a wide variety of methods. And the one I have questioned is the survey that was conducted by Zogby International in Utica. Was there a survey done for 2016, or was the survey from the previous 2012 plan? In that one statement, it said that the survey was on the county website, but it was not as of last night. They couldn't post that survey on the website. In page 79 and 80, the section, "Impacts of Natural Gas Drilling," remain the same from plan to plan, even though there's been over 100 new studies demonstrating the risks of fracking in the compendium of scientific, medical, and media findings, demonstrating risks, harms of fracking. And I have in your handout a website where you can go look at that. Many New York counties have renewable energy projects. They're benefiting government infrastructure, schools, as well as shared community solar. There are no renewable energy projects mentioned in this comprehensive plan. Madison County has a 50-kilowatt solar array. Oneida County Sheriff's Office and jail has a 3.6-megawatt solar project. Amsterdam has a 2,000-panel solar garden that was constructed on an old reservoir site that is expected to save the city around $40,000 a year. Shenango Fork School solar project in 2014, estimated it'll save them $1,000 a month for the 15-year lease. And the teachers agree too, that the solar panels will add students to the student's education. The community 0.74-megawatt solar project in half-moon New York will allow more than 100 local residents to participate in solar energy generation, even though they can't have their own private photovoltaic systems at their homes. And Governor Cuomo announced New York will participate in the U.S. Department of Energy's solar-ready vet screening program, which will provide military personnel stationed at Fort Prong to come onboard with solar so they could be trained in that. Are there any projects planned for the county? Renewable energy is one of the solutions to climate change, and so it is so important to our future that it sparked worldwide concern, as witnessed in these events. The 2015 United Nations Climate Change Conference in Paris, and the People's Climate March in New York City, where close to 400,000 participants were there. And there was a Sing for Climate in London, where 80,000 people gathered and sang so that they could be heard from the European Union to do something about the climate. Thank you very much.
My name is Kenneth Fogarty. I'm from the town of Guilford. With regard to the proposed Shenango Comprehensive Plan, which I'll refer to as the plan throughout my remarks, I must thank those who produce this taxpayer-funded work product, in which we are told that is important to view this plan as a starting point to modern-day planning. In particular, I'm pleased to find among the plan's goals, ensuring Shenango County is a safe, healthy, and stable community in which to reside, and the second goal, to build tourism, agritourism, arts, and cultural opportunities. It's also pleasing to find that among the list of purposes of the plan is to be a statement of policy and a guide to future development patterns for Shenango County, to encourage development of a sustainable economic base, to report key issues facing county residents, to inject long-range considerations into determination of short-range actions. While there is much of value to our community in the plan, it does sadly also contain items, including typographic and grammatical errors, that diminish its worth. Moreover, the plan contains false statements. As a glaring example of this letter, we find a statement on page 139, "Until 1953, Harper College," now Binghamton University, "was one of the only two liberal arts colleges in New York State." I'll repeat that. 1953, Harper College was one of the only two liberal arts colleges in New York State. A list, I should be well-known, there were in fact many more liberal arts colleges in New York State at that time. A list of some such colleges attached. It might shed needed light on this matter. Additionally, reading through the CCP, there are obvious omissions that come to mind as we observe the document drift from its declared goals and purposes. In particular, we note that the Energy Resources section advises us with no documentation of fact that while the merits of each energy source are debatable and subject to personal preference, a variety of energy sources are needed to keep Shenango County residents comfortable and businesses thriving. Then in the subsequent section on natural gas drilling, we advised at the start that this resource gas brings both opportunities and concerns that need to be addressed. As we read through the 15 pages in this section devoted to gas development, we find the statement, "Although this process of high-volume hydrofracking is permitted in every other state where these or similar type shales exist, New York State decided not to allow the practice." Here we note the striking omission of the fact that the negative health impacts raised by New York State Department of Health and New York State DEC guided their decision. There is no mention of that reason for voting the way they did, to say no to hydrofracking. The promise to address concerns remains unmet in this document. Moving along through these pages, we find much praise for gas extraction, citing the need for pipeline construction expansion, promising always without documentation, economic rewards. But we find no mention of the widespread concern of health impacts to community residents who live near gas development. At the end of the Energy section, there are only four pages, including two pages of maps allotted to renewable energy. Here, the tone shifts markedly to cautionary advice. We find, while this will not meet all the energy needs, Shenango County supports renewable energy initiatives for its businesses and residents. Also, we find residents and business owners should consult with professionals as to whether or not their location is suitable for solar energy. Social concerns, including aesthetics and noise, can also be prohibitive for the citing of windmills. Due to their height, the windmills are highly visible and can cause conflicts with neighboring properties. Elsewhere in the plan, we find there is mention of the constitutional pipeline as if it was still a viable project. It has been, as is well-known, denied commission by New York State to move forward. There are several other places in the plan where the language suggests that the material was simply cut and pasted from documents that existed five or more years ago. This is unfortunate, but perhaps explains the complete absence of mention of the documented negative health and environmental impacts of gas drilling and infrastructure projects. As we may know, many of these important scientific findings are very recently publicized results. Attached for the board's use are several documents and extracts that the board may find useful if it wishes to bring the plan up to date. It is my hope that the board endorses a sensible pause in the approval process and allows time and support for refinement of this current version. I will jump now to the end and then back to the attachments. Based on my personal reading of this proposed plan, it is my conclusion that without correction of the errors in the document and without including discussion of the health impacts of the community of its proposals, the plan is fatally flawed, is a fatally flawed work product that does not rise to a reasonable level in order to justify funding with public taxpayer support. Thank you for considering my remarks. And now I will go to the attachments. The first attachment is a list of liberal arts colleges that I just pulled out the top of my head, nearby colleges. There are nine of them. There are dozens and dozens more that were in existence before 1953, so I don't know what was the basis for that statement that is prominently displayed in the section on higher education. The second attachment...
Excuse me, if I'll get you a little while.
Oh, I might pass five minutes. Just briefly, then, I will stop. There is a letter from the EPA highlighting the reasons why the EPA thinks that a FERC should include health impact assessments with their pipelines.
Everyone has them.
I'm sorry, and we have the other two as well. Thank you for listening to my thoughts. Have a good day.
Good morning. My name is Neevi Kim. I've been a full-time resident of this county since 2005. I operate small businesses in the town and city of Norwich. So frequently, I am asked, what in the world may be stuck in these necks of the woods? First, my answer is, of course, don't you see how beautiful it is here? And then I go to, why are the people surprised that I would choose this county to start a business? Some ask the question with plain curiosity, and others are dumbfounded that I would choose such a poor county that would not support my business. I cater to many people on Route 12 who travel on that road going from one place to another. If I could charge for how many times someone has said, you could do a lot better in Binghamton, Syracuse, Hamilton, Utica, Cooperstown, I could probably feed my 60 chickens. The point of bringing this up to your attention is to say that the people of this county themselves are not proud enough of their county to say, of course, you should be here. We deserve you, and we can support you. So much of all of our fights and divide today across the country stems from addressing the symptoms and looking to blame rather than coming together to address the root cause of how we got here. I believe that all of us have a responsibility to lift up our county. What we do or not do have consequences in ways that you cannot even imagine. The county's plan should reflect the present-day solution, not yesterday's solutions, and engage in a new level of industry bringing and jobs that will sustain our future. We cannot be toying with our precious commodities we luckily still have, like clean water and the sun. Much of the world is lacking the things we could not live without even for a few days. All you have to do is see photographs of Beijing, where they cannot see the sun on a daily basis, or closer to us, California, where they are lacking water. For those of us waiting to strike rich with drilling and fracking, which I used to be one of, Steve Palmitier was very kind to me when I first got here, thank you, can rest assured that our property value will soon go up as sea levels rise and clean water becomes so precious. We can still drink from our wells. How many people around the world have that luxury? We need to think of this blessing in terms of being lucky, really. So county's comprehensive plan should reflect the present-day solution for economic, social viability to give our young people a desire to stay and work rather than wishing they were somewhere else. I'm not well-versed in data and statistics as some other speakers before me, but I do have some interaction with members of our community, and I feel that I'm speaking from measuring some of the pulse of this county. Please update and incorporate some new vision in your overall planning to guide us through difficult choices. Thank you for your attention.
My name is Mina Takahashi. I'm a resident of Oxford, but I'm here to read a letter from a resident in North Norwich, Carol De Clu. She's a dear friend, and she's a customer of mine at the Oxford Farmers Market. "As a citizen of Shenango County, I am confused and disappointed as to why guiding Shenango a county comprehensive plan has 14 pages devoted to a technology that is not even currently allowable in New York State. Furthermore, the impacts from natural gas development listed on pages 79 through 80 are outdated as more current information is available on where this technology has been implemented in rural areas, including increased crime and negative social impacts. More attention should be devoted to energy resources that are currently feasible as solar power. Solar resources had only half a page in the plan. Shenango County should be investing in technologies that can be implemented now. This is not a viable plan for energy. Please table the motion to adopt this plan. Instead, set up a committee, including citizens of Shenango County, to further research and develop a viable plan that will be able to be implemented to preserve the safety of its citizens, protect its priceless natural resources, and provide economic planning that is socially acceptable." Dated July 10, 2016, Carol De Clu, Town of North Norwich. I'd also just like to add just a few of my own comments. I was rereading the draft plan, and I noted in the introduction that the plan states that one of its intentions is to have a proactive mindset and to really reflect community consensus and for the beneficial change and progress for this county. And I believe that 14 pages devoted to natural gas development and infrastructure is really not being very proactive. It doesn't, as to follow up on what Ken Fogarty said, the plan says nothing about the negative impacts that have been documented thus far, very recent but documented thus far, and really was the basis for the way the state placed its regulatory ban on high-vine hydraulic fracturing. So I really don't believe that you can move forward with adopting this plan with such outdated and not proactive goals in mind. Thank you.
I have a copy of my remarks for the Board of Supervisors. Mike up.
Move the mic.
Mike up. Mike. Can you hear me? Yeah. All right. My name is Earl Callahan. I am from New Berlin. I've read and taken copious notes on this document. I'm rereading and rereading. I have found some statements that need clarification. First, the plan is labeled as final. My question, what date was the preliminary plan presented? "This plan is supposed to identify current needs and values of residents, businesses, and institutions, as well as present an evaluation of its heritage and cultural background." I don't understand the second part of that sentence. Perhaps the planners can explain it. "The plan is meant to provide the opportunity to guide future growth and development through de-identification of key policies and goals of residents with respect to public health, safety, and general welfare." Good. "We maintain that it fails and needs to be revised and brought up to date." The most puzzling of all the sections of this document on page 69, "Our natural gas drilling is a subject of the next 13 pages," some say 14, I don't count well, "from historical drilling to descriptions complete with maps of various kinds of shale and sandstone which contain natural gas, from thickness to thermo maturity." I'm only quoting. On page 79, "Under Future Natural Gas Development Impact, Both Negative and Sort of Positive" are mentioned. On page 81, the writer of this document slips in an opinion about pipeline when he says that pipeline, quote, "expansion and distribution system should be encouraged in the county." So I guess that's what... My comment says who? On page 82, there's presented a national map of inner and interstate pipelines throughout New York State, and I got question marks there. "The dependency on natural gas as put forth in this county comprehensive plan represents backward thinking. Our beloved county deserves better." Page 83, "Introduction to Renewable Resources," is allotted three sentences. Page 84, it does nothing to explain the current Norwich solar project, which I still don't understand. On page 84, an explanation of why wind resources would not work in our county. Planners are thanked for this explanation. The whole section ends on 85, where the total, final total of pages devoted to renewable energy resources is two and one-half. Noteworthy point of information, the New Berlin library using solar panels has gone from spending $3,500 a year to $600 a year in energy costs. The installation was by Great Brook Enterprises. "It should be noted that the U.S. Chamber of Commerce is working against solar energy, especially net metering, a policy that pays people. Their ideas ignore positive effects of rooftop solar that reduces the need for dirty fossil-fuel-based energy." There's no mention of climate change or how Shenango would deal with such. There is no mention of water pollution, which hydraulic fracturing is infamous for. Lanham's definition of weather and climate, they are not the same, and I'm not going to explain it to you. There are charts from the Union of Concerned Scientists which clearly show that the global average temperature is rising. An important aside, Germany is on schedule to be using 80% to 100% renewable energy by 2050, and we're sort of planning for 2030. Rail service for either freighter passenger is nonexistent, and it's quote-unlanguage that doesn't explain that. And finally, I thought that there was no mention of industrial hemp, but there is, just barely. This August body, you all, on July 13, 2009, wrote a resolution asking unanimously supporting the legalization of industrial hemp as an agricultural crop and the development of industries for its processing. Thanks to Assemblywoman Donna Lupardo and State Senator Tom O'Meara, there is a pilot program... doesn't explain that. And finally, I thought that there was no mention of industrial hemp, but there is, just barely. This august body, you all, on July 13, 2009, wrote a resolution asking unanimously supporting the legalization of industrial hemp as an agricultural crop and the development of industries for its processing. Thanks to Assemblywoman Donna Lu Pardo and State Senator Tom O'Meara, there is a pilot program of research in effect in our state. Our own Morrisville College, not our own here, is studying hemp as an agricultural crop. R&amp;D Farms in Georgetown is growing hemp for that research. Since farmers need to keep land in production, I ask when our own Shenanger farmers will be growing the product and getting paid to do so. We should get our own Assemblyman Crouch involved, as he did co-sponsor the research bill. He could put some direction to our efforts. Suggestion, in Shenango, we could grow hemp crop for the integrated businesses of hemp insulation and animal bedding. There are over 25,000 different products that can be made from hemp. Shenango must plan for hemp business that over time will give us our own gold rush, as we learn of all its possibilities. Leaders must get schools involved with a comprehensive hemp curriculum. If we can make it from petroleum, we can make it from hemp. Overall, it can be stated that there's less to this comprehensive plan than meets the eye. We, the people, ask you to revise it with able citizen assistance in order to meet the standards of guiding future growth with respect to public health and safety, and I'm here to help.
I'll start when I put my glasses on, all right? My name is Fred Langfair. I live in Oxford. I'm a retired school teacher. I taught for 27 years in high school and 17 years as a pre-kindergarten parent family worker, and I'm sort of orientated toward those next generations. And first, I want to say, as I've read this comprehensive plan, that we're all in this together. Everyone in this room is in this whole planning situation, and I hope we can all think way ahead, maybe as far ahead as my two great-grandchildren, both above average, who want fresh air and fresh water. And I hope that all of us, everyone here, can be thinking way ahead. This plan, I think, shows much hard work. It's a very good effort, I think. I think it's a good first draft, because I'm not an English teacher, but I saw several grammatical and syntactical errors in here, and even a couple of spelling errors. I wouldn't like to have that, those left in this thing. And further, I think that more foresight and a vision, a vision that I could agree with in thinking two or three generations ahead, could be shown in this. And I have comments on two areas. One is on industry in Shenango County, and the other is on water in Shenango County. There have been intimations made in a couple of local town boards, and here in this room recently at a board meeting, that if we don't get the constitutional line and gas connections to Chobani and to Raymond Corporation, we could lose those two. So I'm just an ordinary citizen, so I visited both of these companies. I know a few people at Chobani, know some people at Raymond. I talked with Jeff Janung, who I would consider just impeccable in his word over at Chobani, and he assured me, I'm looking, here we go, he assured me that it is sheer speculation that Chobani will leave Shenango County. Chobani has not made one public statement or any company contact with any government officials, and there's no plans for any moving, no matter what the energy situation. The company policy is to deal with local circumstances as they are and never to interfere or try to interfere or influence public policy. I visited Raymond Corporation in person. I didn't know if I'd even get in the door. I asked to see the plant manager, and that didn't work. They turned me over to the legal department, and I spent 45 minutes. They were very hospitable, fellow named John, and I'm not giving his last name because he wanted to be, since I was not writing it down, we weren't recording it, he wanted to be, you know, quoted accurately, to use his last name. But he assured me that there are no plans, not even contingency plans, to reduce the size of Raymond Corporation in Green or to move out of Green. They would need more energy for significant expansion, and then they are looking at solar. They have the roof space, they have talked with Tesla Corporation, and they're high on the lithium-ion batteries. In fact, they use them in all their current products. Someone, I'm sure many people here know their product, the lithium products and so on, they're using lithium-ion batteries. And the first of my, I'd like this to be handed out, this goes along with that. Could I put this on your desk? I'll hold it up so people can see. This is from the July 7 Scientific American, an article that the city of Los Angeles has just now, just signed a contract with AES Corporation, that's the Alternative Energy System, I'll call it, North Carolina, Charlotte, North Carolina, for 18,000 lithium-ion batteries to use in a gang system to back up their energy system there for peak periods, and they're expecting really bad peak periods this summer, basically because of, especially because of that Porter Ranch gas leak that went over and up, and that's put a big dent in their energy supply for this summer. They're expecting probably 14 days of blackout in the city of Los Angeles. So they've gone to this extreme, this new contract. The other thing I'd like to mention is, and more important really, is more of an overarching concern through the generations, is our water supply in Shenango County. I'm going to forget these notes, I'm going to try to, because we have abundant water supply in Shenango County. It's beautiful, from what's called surface water to groundwater to aquifers. It's beautiful. Who would worry about our water? We should worry about our water. I'm going to leave this here, maybe Chairman Wilcox will bring it back to Oxford and give it to me sometime, but I hope someone here at least leaked through this. It's almost like a primer for the world and national water supply. This is a document from the United States Geological Survey, which gives a lot of details about the groundwater situation in the nation. 25 states already have serious, I mean serious, groundwater problems, depletion problems. In fact, here's a list of other things you can read. I'll leave all of these here on the desk, and just get through it. Everything from the Wall Street Journal on a regular basis, the New York Times, Scientific American, Atlanta Magazine are writing on this problem regularly. I would like everyone in this room to be reading about this water situation, because it isn't just a situation in California or Texas. It's coming toward us. It's encroaching on us. Even Susquehanna County, which has had some success with fracking, has also had terrible problems with their water supply wells. Okay? So I'll leave you with that, and I hope you read all those, and I hope we have a continued cooperation with the citizens and the board on improving this comprehensive plan. Thank you.
I'd like you to take one and sit down. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Todd Dryer, and I live in the city of Norwich. Although I work for the city of Norwich in planning and community development, I'd like you to know that I'm here today speaking only as an individual and not as an employee of the city of Norwich. I'm here today to bring to the attention of the Board of Supervisors two items I would like to have considered for inclusion in the county's comprehensive plan. A copy of those items are being passed around right now. The first item concerns the growing problem of vacant, primarily residential properties in the county. I know that within the city of Norwich, we have approximately 40 residential properties that are vacant, many for several years, and I know that this problem exists elsewhere in the county as well. Although I am concerned about all of these vacant properties, I am particularly concerned about a particular category of vacant properties which have come to be known as zombie properties. These are properties where a bank or other mortgage company has commenced the foreclosure process and has evicted occupants of the home, but has not completed the foreclosure process. These zombie properties often persist in a state of limbo for many years, as the mortgagees, who are the lenders, often file numerous postponement motions with the court to prevent the completion of the foreclosure, during which time no one claims to be responsible for the property. These zombie properties are an insidious problem. While the banks holding the mortgages on these properties usually employ service companies to mow the lawn and shovel sidewalks, they typically don't do the more extensive maintenance that these properties require. Consequently, roofs and other structural issues go ignored. Without some amount of concerted interest being shown by the county and local municipalities, these properties are eventually going to turn from assets to liabilities, and they will become very expensive issues for communities to deal with. The second item I want to bring to your attention is the matter of the former Camp Versalia Correctional Facility, which has been vacant for several years and is deteriorating. The state of New York did prepare a short-written plan for marketing the property, but nothing has been done with it recently. This facility has several million dollars' worth of buildings and infrastructure, but if something isn't done soon to examine whether this facility has some value for adaptive reuse, it is going to continue to deteriorate until it no longer has any value at all. I don't think the county should simply rely on the state of New York to pay attention to this issue. Clearly, they haven't. Nothing is going to be done unless the county seriously pross the state on this matter. Therefore, it should be included in the county's comprehensive plan. Finally, I want to say that I realize that the county planning department, the planning board, and other county agencies have been working on this comprehensive plan for several years, and I can understand that many people are eager to see it implemented and completed. However, to the best of my knowledge, this is the first and only public hearing there has been on the comprehensive plan. I'd be happy to be corrected about that, but this is the formal opportunity for the public to contribute their ideas to the plan, and those proposals should be sincerely considered by the board. Based on the number of speakers I've heard from today, it would seem that there is still time for, and it is needed for, the plan is adopted. Contrary to the position expressed by the county planning director in the June 17 edition of the Evening Sun, that making changes, changes to the draft would require a lengthy startover of the secret process, I don't believe that sending the current draft back to the planning board would jeopardize the secret process at all, nor are issues raised today that should be, pardon me, nor are the issues raised today things that should be postponed to a possible amendment of the plan a year or more from now. That simply isn't an appropriate way to address the comments that are being submitted here today at the public hearing. Thank you for the opportunity to offer my comments.
This plan should be tabled until a more complete, accurate, and comprehensive plan can be devised. By next year, the new clean energy standard, for instance, will have been adopted, and it should then be easier to develop additional community solar projects. The whole gas section of the plan is totally out of date. Since gas development has been put on hold by the moratorium, which we all are aware of, more effort and time should be devoted to how this plan can be revised to include responsible and appropriate energy visions and practices for the future. The plan suggests that the development of Marcellus Wells is still possible in New York State, but in 2013, you may have heard about the study that was put together by a panel of experts, including two retired industry CEOs, a former, an expert in deep rock fracturing, a geologist, and a systems engineer, that reviewed the yields of gas well productivity throughout Pennsylvania and locations in, close to the New York State border. And they found that those yields could be predicted according to how close they were to the state border. So yields dropped off dramatically the further north you went. So they judged that Marcellus potential would be severely limited in the state except for only southern parts of Tioga and Broom Counties. Continued economic development is indeed possible within the county without the additional injection of more globally warming gas in the region. The Department of Energy has released a study entitled "Process Heating Systems" that suggests a number of high-heat industrial processes that have previously used gas and are still using gas, but can be achieved more efficiently using electricity alone or electricity in conjunction with gas. This, this study, a referral to this study, could be relevant for plants like the Raymond Manufacturing Company and Green. One new process, for instance, an IR furnace at the Queen City Plant in Ohio has reduced preheating times for aluminum forgings from one to six hours down to 14 to 18 minutes. So we have to reorder our thinking away from fossil-fuel burning combustion technology to electricity and the many uses that electricity can be put to. We have a serious global warming problem to contend with, and gas is a major contributor to that. You may have heard that gas is in fact 100 times more warming than CO2, and CO2 levels have reached 400 parts per million, which is a higher level than has ever been observed or recorded in the past 400,000 years. Since 1981, we've experienced 20 warmest years, and in the past 12 years, we have witnessed that every year has been warmer than the preceding, with the exception of only two. Greenland and Antarctic ice sheets are decreasing en masse. Greenland has lost 36 to 60 cubic miles of ice per year between 2002 and 2006. The Antarctic has lost 36 cubic miles between 2002 and 2005. Glaciers are retreating almost everywhere around the world. Our oceans are absorbing 2 billion tons of carbon dioxide per year, and so acidity has increased 30%. Warmer oceans and land masses are slowing our jet streams, which have led to more frequent extreme weather events, including storms, floods, droughts, with increasing frequency and unpredictability. Dr. Robert Howarth has said in an informal communication that we have to reduce our use of globally warming gas in the next five years in order to delay global temperature increases of 1.5 degrees Celsius above the pre-industrial levels. And we have to do that in order to avoid reaching that critical 1.5 degrees Celsius 12 years from now. In other words, we need to forestall, forestall that warming as In other words, we need to forestall that warming as long as possible, because at that point, we may be reaching the tipping point, and further warming might be irreversible because of the many feedback loops that are already -- have been already set in motion. The future of our country, our county, state, and nation lies with the wide-scale adoption of an electric energy economy based on renewable sources of generation such as solar, and with more attention to energy conservation through more thoroughly insulated and sealed buildings with controlled ventilation. Carter Scott?
Over five minutes.
Oh, all right. Well, I hope we will hear more about this solar plan to install solar at the landfill, and I'd like to see that worked out and resolved. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dan Taylor, Oxford. I want to acknowledge the very informative comments that have been made so far, and I feel that what I have to say pales in comparison to them. Basically, I just wanted to say of the plan as written, where it addresses the energy section, that the emphasis, the strong emphasis on natural gas production and consumption at the expense of passing comment more or less on the renewable sources of energy is unfortunate. And the fact that there is no mention whatsoever of the hazards of gas drilling is unbelievable to me. It's just unconscionable that that's not mentioned in this plan. Sounds like it was written by a gas industry representative. It needs to be rewritten. Those issues have to be addressed. It's way too important. Thank you.
I'm not a public speaker. My name is Trellin Smith. I also live in Oxford, New York. My husband and I have been here since 2003. We've built a house, investing a lot of energy and time, time and commitment to this county and our town. So that's four years ago, almost to the day, I attended my first town board meeting in Oxford out of concern for the threats posed by gas exploration in our area. At that point, there was already enough uncertainty about this process that the state had a de facto moratorium on high-volume hydraulic fracturing in place, but the evidence of negative impacts just kept pouring in, and in December of 2014, as everybody here knows, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation took a step that no other state with provable gas reserves had ever taken before, and they banned the process. This was after seven years of exhaustive research, but they concluded, and I'm quoting here, "That high-volume hydraulic fracturing poses significant adverse impacts to land, air, water, natural resources, and potential significant public health impacts that cannot be adequately mitigated." So, I mean, I don't need to repeat all those, but this is the final finding statement that I hope the county has the copy of. This is the DEC's rejection of the 401 Water Quality Certificate for Constitution Pipeline, and this is the complaint filed by the AG against Constitution Pipeline's activities in premature tree felling, their influence in premature tree felling along the pipeline route of way in New York State, some of it in Champaign County. Given all that, when I read the sections on energy resources in this county, infrastructure, it's not just in that energy resources place. It's sort of scattered throughout. It's in economic development. It's in infrastructure sections. I feel like I'm traveling back in time. I feel like I'm time traveling. And I'm traveling back in time, not forward. And forward is where I would want to be traveling with the plan that's supposed to guide us to the future. And it's dangerously backward. And I just want everybody to just listen to this. Peter Hutterberg already spoke to it a little bit, but this is like the most important thing we know at the moment. And I'm kind of paraphrasing from Bill McKibben's remarks at a recent conference because he said it so well. Over the last three years, we have come to understand that natural gas is not clean, and it's not a bridge fuel. And a lot of people had a lot of reasons to think that for a long time, because it's true that when you burn natural gas in a power plant or your stove, that it releases about half the carbon dioxide that's released when you burn coal. So it sounded like a great idea, right? We'd convert to natural gas, change away from coal, and we'd be dropping our carbon dioxide emissions. And we did. The problem is that if any of that gas escapes in the drilling process, in the transport of that gas, in the combustion process, let off, in the compression process, the gas that's emitted over the short term, 10 to 20 years, is 86 to 100 times more potent greenhouse gas than CO2. So for every -- this means that leakage rates that exceed a couple of percentage points, this is the new finding, a couple of percentage points, if we have leakage rates of 2 or more percent, burning natural gas is worse for climate change than coal, worse. It's worse than the worst form of energy we know. So it turns out that when we look at leakage rates, they're way above that, because fracking is a messy process, and pipelines are messy, and distribution systems are messy, and combustion is messy. And we're at like 9 to 12 percent leakage rates. So what they're finding now, and this is new, and nobody here is to be blamed for any thoughts that happened, that they had about natural gas before it, because the Sierra Club had those same thoughts. This is new information. We are dropping our CO2 emissions, but we are raising our total greenhouse gas emissions by just converting to natural gas. And I can give anybody here who's interested in more information on that. So when I read in this 155 of this comprehensive plan, under goals to limit the impact of natural disasters and climate change, that this county's plan is to encourage the transition from fossil fuel to natural gas, to cut down on greenhouse gases and increase economic vitality, I know I'm reading a document that is dangerously out of date, not only for our climate, but for our own economic viability in this county, which is going to depend on the climate. This is a farming community. The people of this county, I'm going to go over a tiny bit here, so I'm apologizing. The people of this county and their children and their children's children deserve better than this. And I know everybody's worked really hard on this, and there are parts of this plan that are to be commended, but this section needs to change. They deserve better, they deserve, those children and their children's children deserve the best we can give them. And we can do so much better than this, and I really mean it when I say we can do better than this, because I think, this is my personal statement, one of the direct results of my attending that town board meeting in Oxford for the first time in many, four years, more of them, is that I became more involved in my community. And one of the most inspiring projects I've had the good fortune to be involved with is our local farmers market in Oxford, which is just a gem. Yeah. Two seconds. Can I have a minute more?
Who else got an extra? Two minutes.
I'm just, what I want to say is, we can do this. There's so much, there's so much ingenuity and creativity, and this county, we can do this. We can choose another way. And I'll pass, I'll pass a copy. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Annette Bensdeel, sometimes referred to as Dr. P., and I come from the town of Barcelia. And I want to echo the gratitude that's been expressed by other speakers for the work you have put into this document, and I want to echo also their concern for the energy section. Now, I know all of you, or most of you at least, know us. We're familiar, because we come to the town boards with the same concern we come here today with. And I'm thinking when you got up this morning, you probably have visions of us coming to put that same message to you and the board supervisors. And I got up this morning with a vision of people who have put this document together as those who were ready to board a train, and that train was headed for destruction, but they didn't care. And they had a lot of other passengers on this train, some very knowledgeable that it was headed for destruction and some not. But the way to deal with it was they walked to the back of the train, and as they walked to the back of the train, the conductor says, "Oh, you're doing so great, marvelous," and all this thing, never realizing that destruction was the end result. Now, at any point in time, you could get off this train, and there's another train waiting over here, and that train would lead to a land of promise. That train, people are reading a document, it's called the LEAP manifesto, which probably would benefit those who have so ardiously worked on this document, because it does help us reach into the future that the former speaker, Trellin, just mentioned, and a lot of others say they want to look two or three generations ahead. This document was put together by collaboration of people in Canada, but it's used by people throughout the United States. So people on this train are using it, and it not only talks about the need for changing our energy sources to renewable, but also how to work the economy so that it is benefited from this direction. And the other document that those in Champaign County that are on that train might want to read is the 2020 Vision. I'm a proponent of the 2020 Vision, and I know it's in some kind of vault that's comparable to a burial vault, but it should be resurrected. There is some really excellent information to guide the reworking of this document, which I'm sure that you plan to do. And I really appreciate the members of the town boards that have listened to us, and I know they're here today, and the effort of this collaborative board, the Board of Supervisors, to create a document that makes some sense for the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Once again, anyone else that would wish to speak for this public hearing? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Brown moves. 20 seconds, discussion. None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Here. Okay. I'll call your attention to Resolution 13.
Adoption of Champaign County Comprehensive Plan and Planning and Economic Development Committee effort, following moves, adoption resolved. Champaign County Comprehensive Plan dated 2016, due any queries adopted by the Champaign County Board of Supervisors.
Seconded by Mr. Law. Discussion. Mr. Grace.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this Mike?
Yep. Turn down some. Yell.
Hello. This is to talk, but. There we go. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all the speakers, our constituents, for coming forward today and showing us all the collective wisdom we have in the county, the concern, they read the plan, they've offered their insights. I happen to agree with most of what was said, but I've objected to this comprehensive plan going forward at this time, mostly on procedural grounds. We've basically gotten a document together, and we want to adopt it. It's been 40 years in the making. We want to do it right now. We called it the final plan. When it came to committee, planning committee, they were told we couldn't print another version of this, an updated version, because we already spent our printing budget coming up with, it was essentially a draft that we're calling final. There were two supervisors there, myself and Supervisor Heisler, offered to pay to print another version, it would be more accurate. This was turned down as a proposal. I was like half-blow, because I actually didn't have $400 to do this, but I think the county does have $800 to print a more up-to-date version. And like everything we've heard today from these folks who've come in to tell us what they think of what we've done so far, I think the only appropriate thing we can do is table this, send it back to the planning committee, and try to hash out where we go from here. I would say that I think the process we've followed so far is legally flawed. I would defer to our county attorney on this, but my understanding of the law would be that you cannot really take a flawed document to a secret hearing and then to a public hearing when you know that there are like material changes that have happened since it was written. This would of course refer to the Constitution Pipeline, as well as to the other mistakes or errors and missions that were pointed out today. So I would like to make a request, table this plan and send it back to the planning committee. Thank you.
Madam, you making a motion?
Yes, a motion to table this resolution, Resolution 13, and send it back to the planning committee.
We have a motion to table Resolution 13. Go ahead, a second.
Surprise, surprise.
Nice one. Okay. Need discussion?
What is the purpose of tabling it? Is it because of the procedural aspects that you disagree with, or is it because of the energy issues that we discussed today?
All of the above, basically. Procedurally, I don't think we're on very solid ground going forward when we know that we have something that's factually inaccurate to go forward with right now. So I, and also, you know, the idea of printing final copy on the title page, which seemed to indicate that we didn't plan to listen and then digest and possibly act upon any comments made. So I think it should go back for that reason, you know, just to look at the process we've followed so far. Is this legal? But then I think we should take the concerns of them addressed today and talk about them in committee. We've never had this discussion before. We've endorsed the Constitution Pipeline at least three times. We've never really had a discussion about the pros and cons. We've had the pros, but not the cons. We've had some of the cons today. I think it's appropriate to go back to committee and examine what was said today, see, you know, if we need to change anything. So I would tell you, yes, procedurally, I think we're defective. And second of all, we've had, you know, wonderful comments here from people who have a different perspective than perhaps most of us, but maybe we should consider it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would ask, are we on shaky legal ground? I guess that would fall for the attorney.
It would be my motion that I go into executive session and ask the attorney.
Is an executive session thing?
No, all I can tell you, I have not researched that issue with respect to a comprehensive plan, so I'm not going to give you an answer off the top of my head.
But is it a possibility, Alex?
From what little I do know about it, comprehensive plans are not legally binding documents to our county. So it's not like passing a local law, it doesn't have that effect.
Excuse me. This is an update of a current plan, is that correct?
Yes. Officially, it's a 40-year-old plan that we're updating.
I'm not sure that's right, because I remember going through this process less than 10 years ago. Maybe that was another update.
We've been working on this update since 20.
In any rate, so if we don't adopt this update, then does the 40-year-old plan remain in place?
Well, yeah, again, it does. Well, yeah, but again, it doesn't have legal effect, so it doesn't require, either way, it doesn't require government to do anything, it's just essentially in the nature of recommendations.
But I think one of the things you learn about the planning process right off the bat is that it's always going to change. And like, we can set horizons that we want to meet, and nothing was said here today that we probably don't agree with, you know, except for the natural gas thing, whether we agree or disagree with that. But as far as Shenango County being a wonderful place to live, we all believe that. Everybody sitting around this table believes that, that's nothing new for us, we all believe that. And like, it's a matter of opinion how we go forward. And like, if we have, if we're on some kind of shaky legal grounds with a local law, then that would be an issue. But if it's a comprehensive plan, then it's, is it an issue? I guess that's my question, is it an issue?
Again, I haven't researched it with respect to that particular type of, you know, comprehensive plan, all I do know is it's not. It doesn't have the effect of local law, it doesn't buy a county.
The anti-fracking, anti-gas people have this habit of suing everybody in sight. And I'm just thinking, if we passed this plan, are we going to in turn be sued and then have to go higher up and go through this long?
Well, I would think that would be unlikely, it's a legislative project, it's difficult to sue legislators for, you know, legislative programs that they undertake. The only concern I may have, and this is not an area I'm expert on, is to what effect does the plan have an impact upon grants and those types of things, or funding from federal and state sources? I'm not, you know, versed on that area, so to the extent that it may impact grants or funding, I don't know.
Yeah, we had a discussion phase, Mr. Chairman, okay.
Discussion on table.
Pardon?
Discussion on table.
Yeah, and the tabling, and I do see in regards to the zombie properties being addressed, as well as the camp for Celia being, what is the vision? Because that could have potentially a very positive impact if it was dealt with. And if it is in the comprehensive plan as far as getting potentially grant monies to potentially upgrade that or do something with it, I think it's something to be considered at least, and I think those are valid points.
Mr. Senate?
You know, we've heard the $800 figure mentioned, that that's what we spent on the printing and so forth. You know, I'm just going to throw the question out there, how much has a county actually invested? We're investing in our future here on this whole process. I've sat on the county planning board, I think, for about seven years, I've been part of that. Do we have any idea what else was invested in this? I know a lot of time, I know the planning department put a tremendous amount of time in, as did members of the county planning board. But what sort of investment has a county actually financially made in this document?
I'd like to just ask, are we looking to table this for, it should either be procedural reasons or content reasons? It seems like we've discussed the content of this many, many times. We appreciate the diverse opinions that come in, and we understand that from what direction you're coming from. But we've discussed all the different details of this plan. What we're talking about now is, did we follow the procedures correctly? And is that, is that the reason why we'll table it? That's the only reason. Everything else has been discussed from one end to the other. Like I say, appreciate public input, but this has all been discussed in the past.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, and no comprehensive plan will ever be current. And my question is, the process to amend the current plan in the future when things change, or history, history that has occurred since the final plan has come forward, I mean, an amendment to that plan annually, two years, three years, whatever, could be a insignificant venture to keep it as close to current as it could possibly be. Thank you.
Well, the biggest thing I kept hearing all day long was the energy part of it. I didn't, I never heard anybody comment on any of the good parts of it. You know, I've seen this going on a good 20 years since we did the 2020 plan, and we spent a lot of hours on that one. I think there was over $20,000 spent on that one to get it printed and out. And if you look back over that one, the energy was still the same. No one really mentioned nuclear power, nuclear waste going through the county on trucks and stuff that we know could be taking place every day, and nobody even mentioned it, God forbid, but when it happens, we're going to be in a real mess. But these are some of the things, you know, we had discussed, but we didn't really want to put in there because we didn't want to scare everybody out of the county either. So the biggest thing, do you want us to go over the energy part of it, or do you want to just, I guess I'm asking the same question, why are we tabling that? Or do we go back and stick with the 2020 and another 20 years from now we'll just pull it out of the cupboard?
Sit down.
One of the things I heard right at the very beginning was it would be reviewed yearly. So that tells me, this is not a perfect plan right now, there's no way it's going to be a perfect plan because day-to-day things change. But if it's reviewed yearly, I don't have a problem with that.
Is it going to be reviewed yearly?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Mr. Heisler?
I just have a little bit of a problem, and Mr. Grace and I have taken a little flak in this. We all agree that a comprehensive plan is perhaps a living, breathing document that changes. But my point is, why go into it knowing the flaws that we have? I mean, it's, as we each vote, we are putting our personal stamp on saying, I believe in this document. And at this point, I don't, only because I think there are enough flaws in it and issues that were interestingly enough brought up today, some of which we have discussed, zombie properties and things, these things have all been, have been discussed. So I'm kind of con in terms of tabling, not only from a procedural standpoint, but with the inaccuracies that have been pointed out.
Yeah, I would point out to those that feel this is a flawed document, that we're sworn to uphold the laws of New York State. We take that oath of office every time we're elected. I would point out, pipelines are not illegal. Because one has been forbidden doesn't mean we don't have a bunch of other ones. I would also point out that gas drilling is not illegal. High-volume hydro fracking is illegal. We don't control a lot of these decisions. One of the speakers said, well, the renewable fuel standards are going to be changing soon. Do we wait for that to change? Do we rewrite the plan then? Things change all the time. And I think if the board makes a commitment to amending these things annually, my very first board meeting 22 years ago, and change unfortunately, it seems like a long time, we had a vote on the 2020 plan, which basically they received and filed, and I haven't heard much about since. And that's a shortcoming for us. If someone's interested in amending the plan, then by God, it ought to be done, and it ought to be done annually. But to get the timing perfect, or get one, as one of the other speakers said, that I can agree with, I think that's going to be tough, to get one that we can all say, I agree with that. So this is guidance, this is not law. This doesn't say you've got to do this, or you've got to do that. I've been waiting my entire career for a revision of the comprehensive plan, and here it is, and now things have changed. And, you know, we're having a group of people that are vehemently opposed to a certain thing want to change it. Okay, let's change it in the First Amendment, if that's what you want to do. It's an ongoing process, it's supposed to be, there's no reason why it can't be. I don't want to wait another 22 years for a plan, or another five years, or another six years, or whatever, let's get it on the table, and if it has to be changed, let's change it.
Okay. Grace? Yes, let's see, as far as being a living, breathing document, yes. We also have a certain situation right now where facts are where they are today as we vote. Now, the governor and the DEC in April, I think it was the 22nd of April, stopped the Constitution pipeline. We had our secret hearing two months later in June, and now here we are three months later, and we're not going to even update something three months old. We're not asking people to anticipate what happens next month, we're asking to be current. Now, this could have been changed, I would say fairly expeditiously. So we went through secret, we had current information. And when we had, you know, the public here today, they had a document that addressed facts as they exist today. As far as like Mike's point about whether we're addressing procedure or, you know, anything that the public has said, I think the purpose of a public hearing is to listen to the public and not just ignore it, or say, oh, maybe next year we'll address it, but to like examine it before we vote on it, to say, hey, wait a minute, maybe we should have spelled this word right, maybe we shouldn't have called it final, maybe we shouldn't look at our energy section because it is out of date. So I would say that we take the comments from the public and we go over them. That's what I would think the committee would do, say, well, here's this, do we agree with this? Not really. Or some of us do, some of us don't. But procedurally, I think you try to give current information to the public at a public hearing, and certainly before voting, try to have it up to date. It's not like something happened yesterday. If this had the Madison County plan, we'd change it. This is Shenango County. It'd be like an automatic sort of thing. If this like had the wrong date and it were adopted, we'd change it, that's a factual error. So all I'm saying is like, I think we should go back to committee to look at whatever was addressed today by the public. Thank you.
Mr. Landry?
Yeah, it appears to me, and I don't want to mischaracterize the speaker's statements, but the general tone seemed to be anything to do with fossil fuel is going to be opposed. And what I would point out, we don't control the pipeline issue, the pipeline issue, if I understand it, is going to be appealed, and the state of New York may be overruled by the federal government. It's not something that we control. The renewable fuel standards are going to change. Do we wait for these things, or do we deal with them? You're calling the denial of a permit a fact, that's a fact, but that's a fact that could change. And it's a fact that we have no control over. And I think this is a tempest in a teapot. But that's my opinion.
Okay, we've got our request to call the question. Is there other discussion that wants to go to this table?
We're voting on the tabling motion now?
Yes, tabling motion is what we're voting. And I guess I'll call for a roll call vote on the table.
Flanagan?
No.
Mastrow?
No.
Heisler?
Yes.
Cory?
No.
Lawrence?
No.
Navenger?
No.
Grace?
Yes.
Ireland?
No.
Jack?
No.
Raymond?
No.
Senate?
Yes.
Outwater?
No.
Kinnor?
No.
Starr?
Yes.
Lonzer?
No.
Law?
No.
McNeil?
No.
Jeffrey?
No.
Williams?
No.
Brown?
No.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Masaro Alger?
Yes.
And Wilcox?
Yes.
No. Six. Six yes, 17 no.
Six yes, 17 no, motion to table fail. Okay, back to the motion of the Resolution Number 13, and further discussion on the Resolution 13 as. If not, have a roll call on Resolution 13.
Mastrow?
Yes.
Heisler?
No.
Cory?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Navenger?
Yes.
Grace?
No.
Ireland?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Senate?
Yes.
Outwater?
Yes.
Kinnor?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Lonzer?
Yes.
Law?
Yes.
McNeil?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Masaro Alger?
Yes.
Flanagan?
Yes.
And Wilcox?
Yes.
21 yes, 2 no.
21 yes, 2 no, comprehensive plan is adopted. And let me say, I would like to thank the people that attended this vote today concerning this plan, and I would be certain that we will be reviewing this document on an annual basis as it falls. Hey, I think that we can stand adjourned until the 8th day of August to thank up the years.[1782.66]